It's 5 o'clock. We'll call the county board meeting to order. A roll call.
We have 24 supervisors in attendance, nine attending remotely, one excused supervisor Reeser.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Invitation by Supervisor Joan Honell.
Someone once said that you can judge a person by his or her checkbook stubs. As county board members, we are gifted with lives of relative luxury and opportunities unknown to many. As we review our checkbooks and the registers of our lives with honesty, may we consider our priorities and our opportunities to help others. May we open our hearts and our accounts to those in need. Let us share not only our tangible wealth, but also our intangible riches of knowledge, leadership, and creativity to make our county, our nation, our world a better place filled with peace and love for all.
Thank you. Review and approval of minutes October 6, 2020. Motion by Supervisor Ladak, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Any corrections or changes? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Minutes are approved. Correspondents?
Wisconsin Counties Association, Wisconsin Register of Deeds and COVID-19, Wisconsin Counties Association, 2021 Discover Wisconsin Calendar.
Presentations, Health and Human Service Director Ray Shabelski and County Executive Holman, COVID-19 updates.
Short person must have been here before. Good evening. Good to see all of you and good to see everybody on the video. Just where we're at as far as today, we are currently at 1,952 confirmed cases since the start of the outbreak. That's up 25 from yesterday. We're at 14,856 negative cases. That's up 52 from yesterday. We are currently at 14 fatalities here in Portage County, and we are at 1,657 recovered cases at this time, which equates to about 85% of all the cases that we've had have been now recovered. So, we are happy to announce that we have started our community testing. It did start last week on Tuesday and Thursday. So, it's every Tuesday and every Thursday, and Tuesdays is from 1 to 5. Thursdays is from 9 to 1 at the ADRC or the Lincoln Center in their South Carport. It is drive-through testing. Last week in our first two days of testing, we had 237 people that were tested. So, we're hoping to get 300 during those two days, but for our first couple of days, we thought that was a pretty good start. We also just received word last night that we are going to add an additional day of Wisconsin National Guard or WING testing, if I use that acronym. That's what it means. They're going to be starting next week on Mondays. So, they're going to be there from Mondays from 8 to 4. So, we'll have all-day Monday, half-day Tuesday, half-day Thursday. This is just mainly to supplement the testing that we have currently going on, you know, with our medical community here. So, and I will tell you, out of those 237 tests that we did, we had 22 positive tests, so just below 10% of a positivity rate moving forward. So, that's a little high. Obviously, we'd like to see a zero positivity rate, but that's not happening these days. So, in case you're interested, we are also currently, we have 12 individuals who are currently hospitalized for us at this time, and since the start of the pandemic, we've had 107 total people hospitalized. So, 107 total, but currently today we have 12. And as I mentioned, unfortunately, we had 14 fatalities so far. So, other things just going on as far as updates and certainly operationally, we continue to operate on a seven-day-a-week, you know, 8 to 10 hours a day cycle. So, we're there every day. We are reaching out to try to get, you know, a hold of those positive cases and their close contacts. We get lots of questions in regards to what's causing, you know, our big outbreaks and what's causing our numbers to jump. Not one specific thing. Honestly, folks, you know, what we're looking at here is mostly it's associated with social gatherings, but social gatherings of variety of sizes. So, we're not talking necessarily these big, large gatherings, although those are happening as well, but it can be small. It can be small. We've had outbreaks associated with weddings and funerals and baby showers and all sorts of things. You know, we've had outbreaks associated with, you know, kind of an at-the-moment retirement where a number of people just went out after work with their buddy because he was retiring. We've gotten four or five positive cases from that. So, it's out. It's all over. We know that. You know, we've had, you know, like this past weekend on Sunday, when I was in, we had 52 positive cases. You know, on the day before, I think we had 30-some positive cases. Thursday, we had 14. Some of it has to do with the way the testing comes in and out, or just the fact that that's just what's happening. You know, I would like to say that we've seen that curve go down, you know, but it hasn't. I mean, we're really seeing this as far as just the number of positives. I think the trajectory of the state, you know, again, you'll see that like yesterday, there were 3,200 positive cases in the state of Wisconsin. That's a lot of, that's the record for the state of Wisconsin in one day. So, lots of things happening. Just a couple of other things that I will mention is that, starting last week Thursday, the limited public gathering or emergency order number three came out from the Department of Health, the Secretary Designee Palm, basically limiting the capacity of indoor public events to 25% capacity of whatever that building size is. Lots of exemption in that emergency order, including what we're doing here tonight because local government is an exemption. So, but there's a number of issues in regards to this, but certainly one of the questions that's going to come up is, is in around enforcement. According to this order, this is going to be enforced the same way as the governor outlined in his face-covering order. So, basically complaints coming through public health, moving up to the district attorney. We've been talking about enforcement with this. Attorney Ray, did you want to add anything?
Not a whole lot at this point, other than to let the board know that when Director Shabelski indicates that we are looking at this, what that means is, I've already talked to the district attorney. We've talked a couple of times. He's confirmed for us in writing that his office, there's a section in the statute that says when there's enforcement provisions of the type that are in the current order that's on the books, that it's the DA's office that will pursue those if need be. It's not automatic. I mean, we try to educate folks, and I think we'll continue with that approach for now. But if it does reach an enforcement point where we're setting foot into court, then the DA's office will handle that. My office will obviously assist him to the extent that we can and to make sure that the communication is smooth between HHS and the DA's office.
And again, and again, we are, you know, our first two attempts are about education. It's not, you know, it's not about, oh, we caught you. It's about education, saying this is what the order says, this is what you need to do, and really it's about, you know, helping all of us, you know, do what we can to try to control the spread of this virus. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Barry?
Thank you, Ray, for your update. Would you say we have X amount, and forgive me for not remembering the exact number, hospitalizations here in Portage County? Does that take into effect someone who may have lived in Portage County and gone to another healthcare facility outside of the Portage County boundaries?
Correct. That is correct, sir.
So, say if someone from Junction City?
Went to Marshfield, yep.
We do not have those numbers?
No, we would have those numbers. Those are included in our numbers.
They are.
If they're a Portage County resident, then they're going to be included in our numbers, yes.
Okay. And one other question, if I may. When you talk about that we did 230-some tests at HHS, did everyone get a test or were people turned away?
Everyone got a test.
Everyone that showed up got a test?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Anybody else? Supervisor Bob Gifford.
Yeah, it's not a question, just the same comment I made yesterday, that with respect to the economic impact, the Department of Workforce Development shows on their website, mass layoff website, 30,500 so far this year, which is the total of 2019 plus 2018 plus 2017 plus 2016 mass layoffs. These are the 50 and above numbers. So, you know, when we said in the beginning that this was going to have a severe economic impact, I think that the facts are still rolling in and showing that fact.
It's not done yet either. We're going to see that for long effects of this into the future. Supervisor Jakowski.
Just want to know how we determine anybody?
Capacity for businesses.
So, that's, so the capacity of the building is determined by the, by whatever municipality. Sometimes it's the fire marshal, sometimes it's the building inspector. So, the local municipality sets the capacity of the business. We're just saying, simply divide by four. So, yeah, we don't, we don't have anything to do with that.
Anybody at home have any questions?
Nope.
Joan, you have a question? You're muted.
I do. Ray, of the 12 people who died, was it 12 or 14 deaths? Do you know how many of those were people who were hospitalized?
They all were hospitalized, to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Anybody else at home have a question?
The sheriff does.
Sheriff?
I just wanted to say, Ray, on the WING testing, you said it was 8 to 4, it's 9 to 5 is what I was told.
Oh, it was, oh, they changed it to 9 to 5? Okay. It started 8 to 4, but it's going to be 9 to 5 on Mondays. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Barry? You made me think of a question. The people that, or Joan did, the people that were hospitalized, the 14 in past, do you know where, and maybe this question, maybe you don't have that answer for when we talk about HIPAA laws, but do you know, were they of all high-risk categories?
I guess I'd need to know what you mean by high-risk.
Well, were they in a category of, did they have underlying medical conditions or did, were they, of course, I realize people can have hidden underlying medical conditions as well. I was just wondering if they were elderly people, people that had, you know, strep in the immune system?
Not all, unfortunately. Most, most, to answer your question, did have, were what we would consider elderly, and a number of them did have, you know, coexisting conditions, but not all.
Supervisor Splinter.
Just curious, on like 237 people tested, when they come in, is there a criteria for them to get a test? Like, do they have to have a fever or some symptoms like a cold? I'm sure a lot of people got their standard cold and they're worried, which I would be worried myself, but did they all have some type of system or can they come in there without any symptoms and get tested?
So, what we're asking people for is that you would have one of the 10 symptoms, but honestly, we're going on their word because if somebody said, you know, one of the symptoms is a headache, I can't prove if you have a headache or not. I can prove if you've given me a headache, but I can't prove if you have one. So, but, so they should be symptomatic and they can be asymptomatic if they say, I am a close contact to a positive case, that I know, you know, person X was positive, I was near them, I've been identified as a close contact. We'll test those people. We're asking, however, that those people kind of give it that four or five days to make sure their viral load is where it needs to be.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think that one, Ray, I don't know if it's some of the hospitals that were doing the testing and things, that one seemed to go back and forth, and I think I even called you on that. It was inconsistent.
Absolutely, yep. And, you know, a lot of it had to do with, you know, when our hospital systems, did they have enough of the testing medium? Did they have enough test kits? Those type of things. So, they were really vacillating back and forth that, yes, we were going to do asymptomatic and no, we were not going to do asymptomatic. I know that was real frustrating for our citizens in our community too because we'd get those calls going, how can I get a test? So, that's, that's one of the reasons we worked real hard to get a community testing established, and now at least we know that until the middle of December, that's going to be an option for people to get tested.
Supervisor Maresi, you had one, a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Shabelski, when you're talking about social gatherings, are those, is that including like any cases that may come from bars or establishments like that?
You know, I guess I wasn't referring to those. It would absolutely include that, but you know, what we've been seeing is it's been more along the lines of, you know, weddings, funerals, just, you know, barbecues, get-togethers, those type of things, but yes, it absolutely would include that in that definition.
And are we seeing any, any areas of concern from those kinds of establishments?
I'm sorry, excuse me. Yes, certainly we are, we are continuing to see positive cases associated with somebody at business X, you know, or establishment Y, but again, you know, it's really difficult to say that's where the majority of the case, because they're not. They're just all over the map, you know, and that's what we're seeing.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Barry, you had another question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you again, Ray, for tolerating my question. Do we have an ample amount of tests statewide?
Yeah, I do believe that right now. I mean, again, we are getting, so, so, starting next week, we are going to be getting 600 tests a week and/or more because one of the things, and I apologize for staying up here too long, but one of the other things that we're doing is we're, we've established strike teams. So, those strike teams are going to be able to go into, you know, an identified area, and it's going to be like a nursing home or a assisted living facility or somewhere where they have an outbreak, and we're going to be able to do testing there too. So, you know, I was remiss not mentioning that before, but my point is, is that we are getting adequate test supplies for us, and I think the hospitals now in our medical systems do have adequate supply of testing.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
These tests that are being done, and forgive me for not knowing the name of the test, are they the SWAT test or the quick, I guess I've heard it called the quick test? You probably know them.
Yes, yes. So, the difference is the antigen and the NCR. So, no, they're not the quick antigen test, they are the nasal swat.
Which is more, excuse me, which is more accurate?
Correct, correct, yes.
Supervisor Dodge.
Your numbers include repeat testing? I mean, if somebody shows up negative and two weeks later they come back again for another test?
Yes, yes, they would. That is correct. Because it's just the actual result of the test. So, these are not, this is a duplicated count, and we do have some people that are getting tested multiple times, so.
Ray, you're having trouble getting contact tracers? How are you doing in that?
You know, right now, we've actually reached where we think we're very comfortable with the number of contact tracers we have. We have approximately like 16.5 FTE working for us. So, you know, we're pretty good, but you know, it's going to happen where some people are, they're going to find out, this isn't for me, you know, or they walk in and say, you know, I don't want to be around that guy, and they maybe they met me, I'm not sure. But, so, so right now, we're pretty good. You know, a big shout-out and thanks to facilities and IT and our county executive who helped set up some extra workstations up in the annex for us in the finance, what was the finance computer room, you know, where we went to learn all about the new changes in the finance system. So, that's been really helpful because we can put some people there. We have bodies working remotely, and of course, we have bodies at the Guilford Building as well, so.
Anybody else have any questions for Ray? Ray Reeser, you have a question?
Yes. Director Shabelski, can you give me the average return time on test results? And can you tell me if there's a difference between the test results run by the National Guard and the other test results that were running?
There's a difference as far as time?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, so it depends on which system that you're going to. You know, right now, I'll tell you that we're three to four days out to get testing results if you go to the ADRC. So, so three to four days. You know, there are systems that we, you know, we've had people get testing results back in 48 hours, 72 hours. Unless you're getting a rapid antigen test, then it's different, and that can be back in a very short period of time. But, but if you're getting, if you're getting the NCR test, it's typically right now what we're running is that three to four days.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Martenson.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Director Shabelski, I'm just wondering if we have a percentage of week-over-week trending, month-over-month, or how we're documenting that trending, and I'm wondering if there's any way for you to quantify the effect or pressure it's having on our local healthcare system?
Okay. So, that's a great question. I don't, I don't have, I mean, I, obviously, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that we are trending up certainly month to month. You know, when, when, when I first, the first time I had the opportunity to come and speak to this body, I believe it was in May, maybe June, it was right around there. On June 5th, we had 15 positive cases in Portage County. 15. 1,952. We're trending up over these months. You know, week to week, I guess I would have to go back and take a look at that. I certainly can get back to you in regards to what that looks like, and I apologize, I forgot this is the last part of your question, sir.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if there's any way for you to quantify what kind of impact or pressure this is having on our local?
On our system, sure. And that's a great question. So, you know, I don't want to speak for our hospital systems, but I will tell you that in the conversations that we had, are having, excuse me, they're feeling the pressure. They're feeling the pressure. There's, you know, there's, there's, you know, and again, you got to remember that our systems here, they all have, they all have sadly, you know, you're talking, when you're talking Ascension, you're talking a pretty big system. When you're talking about Marshfield Clinic, obviously, they have a hospital system, you know, outside of the county as well, Aspiris as well. So, what they've indicated to us is that they're holding their own, but it's climbing to the point where they're starting to get concerned, you know. So, I can't give you exact number of beds availability because I wouldn't speak for any of those systems, but we know that, we know that there's areas in the state that are being really hard-hit. The Brown County, Fox Valley area, extremely hard-hit. They're, they're reporting that they're at 95, 100, 105% of capacity. Dane County getting hit pretty hard just with hospital beds. So, again, that's, that's always been the concern, you know, since the start of this, where, you know, it's about, you know, your recovery rate can be good, you know, and we sat for months and months and months without any fatalities, thank God, but, and unfortunately, we have some now, but it's a concern, is, one of the big concerns has always been, what is the pressure going to be on the hospital system? As you might have heard, the state and the governor has opened up that, what they're referring to kind of as a field hospital in, at the State Park Fairgrounds, they just opened that up. There was discussion of one opening up in Marathon County as well, just COVID beds only, which would they be treated? The issue around, around those field hospital type of situations is staffing. It's how do you staff it? Because, because again, we, you know, it's the impact on the staffing when you have, when you have hospitals that are bulging at capacity and things like that, and systems themselves will have to make decisions as we progress through this. I don't know if they'll back off on elective surgeries like they did in the beginning or not, but we'll see, so.
Corp Counsel David Ray.
Thank you. One other point that I can add to piggyback on what Director Shabelski was saying as far as the local healthcare providers are concerned, when we were in touch with all three of them last week, the other thing they told us is that they are communicating with each other on a daily basis, and they're cooperating together, so we were relieved to hear that.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, thank you, Dave, or David, Ray, Ray. Too many Rays. Thank you, Ray. Public notice, members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their requests at this time, with such comments subject to reasonable control of the county board chair set forth in Roberts Rules of Order. First item, 2021 county budget review and discussion, including comments by the board, public comments, and the referrals of budget items for future committee referrals. No formal amendments at this meeting. Anybody? Jenny? Jenny, do you need to say anything on this?
Not unless you have questions or want something clarified.
I believe someone wants something clarified.
Okay. Anybody have any comments, concerns on anything upcoming? Any Supervisor Maresi?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering, I know that the executive had placed an additional $5,000 into land and water for kind of helping rectify the situation in Nelsonville with wells. I'm wondering if there's any possibility of robbing Peter to pay Paul to put more money into, into that area of land and water conservation. I see it as a very high need and it might be a very huge priority for our county, our county's farmers and citizens to have clean and clear water and something that we should all be concerned about. I just, I just don't know how to go about doing it, so I'm kind of throwing it out there as an idea of how we could brainstorm to potentially put a little bit more money into that funding.
Executive Holman, are you on?
I can speak to that real quick. I totally understand where Supervisor Maresi's coming from. The additional 5,000 was to assist in the normal testing that we've been doing, but also just in acknowledgement of the direction that that committee's been heading in, talking about nitrogen budgets and other work that will need to take place. But in the big picture for that one, not knowing exactly what the work would be yet or what the cost associated with it would be, it made sense to me to say, okay, well, let's add this for now, and then as we move through, let's go back to find the county board and ask for contingency support to say, hey, this is, the committee wants to do X, you know, this, say the $5,000 that was put in this year can contribute towards that, and you needed another, say, $5,000 hypothetically, then you could just say, all right, for this $10,000, you're going to get your nitrogen budget. It's just, I think the, there's, the allocation is just signaling in the general direction of this work, but also just to acknowledge that there may be a need for additional funding there, just like we, you know, as I mentioned in the presentation, that there may be more contingency requests next year than usual just because there's a great degree of uncertainty in general with COVID-19, but also these kinds of issues where conversations are ongoing, and we're going to start to see which directions that work will go and then what costs are associated with it. But yeah, I would certainly support, I mean, if there's a need for something from that committee, work to do, I would, through the finance committee and the board.
You're breaking up, Chris. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Supervisor Maresi there, as Chair of the Land and Water Conservation Committee, there are several ideas that we will be pursuing in the next couple of months here, and we probably will need to come for some budget adjustments. So, I think as Executive Holman stated, the 5,000 will go for the start of plans, and as we find concrete things that the committee and that the science will lead us to, we will probably be looking for some budget adjustments if there is anything to be clamored onto.
Sounds great. Thank you both for your explanations. I really appreciate it.
Anybody else? Other than that, sounds good. Thank you, Jen. Thanks, Chris. Uh, next item, confirmation of county executives' reappointments. Reappointment of Supervisor Mua to the Housing Authority Board for a five-year term expiring September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Maresi. Seconded by, uh, Joan, did you have your hand up? Seconded by Supervisor Honal.
Yes.
Uh, Supervisor Matt Jakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. I'm understanding that all committees are important and all appointments are important. As I looked through this appointment, I realized that Supervisor Mua had missed thirty-eight percent of the meetings, um, of this committee. That's quite a number of meetings when she's one of the representatives from the county board. There was also during her time, two meetings canceled due to lack of a quorum. Um, I would suggest that we vote this down, send it back to the county executive, and find somebody that can represent the people out of the majority of the meetings. Um, and the thirty-eight percent's concerning, but the two canceled due to no quorum is also very concerning. So, I will be voting no.
Are you making that in the form of a motion amendment?
There's a motion on the floor, so I can't make a motion. So, you'd have to vote this motion down, that, then it would, voting this motion down and send it back to the executive.
Anybody else have any comments? Joan?
Uh, could you repeat what, um, the supervisor just said? I, it was quite muffled for me at home.
Can you spin the mic over?
Just concerned.
Sure. Um, Supervisor Mua had missed thirty-eight percent of the meetings, um, for the Housing Authority Board, which is a concern itself because it doesn't meet all the time. Um, so, it's, it's a, over a third of the meetings that she's missed. Um, also, there was two meetings that were scheduled for the, um, Housing Authority Committee, and those two meetings were canceled, uh, due to a lack of a quorum. So, I, I don't know if they were because that Supervisor Mua couldn't make it for a quorum, but that's concerning also. Um, so, I asked to send it back to, um, Executive Holman, um, to, to appoint somebody that can attend these meetings, so the county has representation at these meetings.
Supervisor Mua?
Well, I am glad someone else is checking. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, hello, can you all hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Yep.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm glad someone else is checking up on me. Um, and, you know, I think this brings us to the point of, um, let's be honest, and I know we brought this to the committee already, um, many of us also have jobs outside of the county board. Many of us are not retired or are not self-employed, where we can actually dedicate a hundred percent of our life to the county board. Uh, many of us attend as many meetings as we possibly can, and I will assure you that, uh, those meetings that had to be canceled because there was not a quorum, uh, that I was not the deciding factor in that. Uh, whether this precise appointment or not, uh, doesn't matter, but what it does show me is, um, that for this to be picked up and pointed out, uh, for such an issue, I know what to expect in the future from, uh, other fellow members of the board.
I think that, uh, at the beginning of the appointments of committees as well, though, Supervisor Mua, you had asked to only be on three committees because of your job, and, and that was one of the things that I, I tried to honor, uh, and removed you from one of the committees, because I, I do know what it's like to try and have a job and balance that between county government. But on something like this, then the, the appointment, uh, if, if you're overloaded, uh, I would say it would have been, uh, something that I would have probably, myself, would have, uh, asked to not be appointed to because of the fact that I, my plate is full, I've already got too many things going on, uh, and just respectfully decline. But, uh, anybody, uh, that has change in work, change in lifestyle, where it becomes too much, please let myself know, uh, so that we can look at that and get people on there that, that can serve. Uh, and again, we, I, I understand that Supervisor Mua, and I, I respect that, the balance of it, but, and I would ask no one to take on more than they can handle. So, Supervisor Mua, did you wanna respond as well again?
Yeah, no, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for, for, for that. Um, since the, uh, this year, I've missed two meetings, um, on the, um, I've missed the last two months' meeting for the Portage County, um, Housing Authority, uh, just for those, I thought, so, uh, yeah, I feel.
Finney before that, please.
If you are not, I'm speaking, and that was very rude. Um, I, I do feel that, um, yeah, if you are skilled, that I, I'm not the best person to represent the county board on this committee, I am happy to let someone else represent us and make sure that the right decisions are made.
Uh, I've got Supervisor Maresi, and then Supervisor Johnson after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, long before I was on the board, uh, I, I heard stories about some, some of our members, you know, who were snowbirds and left for Florida, Arizona, and vacation, uh, time in the winter, uh, and they would miss a lot of meetings too. And I just wonder, you know, did, were they given as much heck about that as, as we're giving Supervisor Mua right now? Cuz I know that, you know, Supervisor Mua does have a job that requires her to travel, and, and she does have very small children, and, uh, you know, and, uh, a, a lot of, lot on her plate, as we all do. Um, but I just, you know, we do have a lot of snowbirds out there back in the day, and I just wondered, did, were they, uh, given as much slack about that?
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my only comment is this. Um, I wish Supervisor Matt Jakowski had stated this more in a question instead of an accusation. Supervisor Mua appears to be a very busy working professional. It, it doesn't have to be an accusation, it should be a question. How do you feel Supervisor Mua about this, this role? Are you able to handle it?
Just writing.
Making the accusation, I, I think is inappropriate, and, and it's just, it's, it's sad and unnecessary. If Supervisor Mua, as an adult, feels that she can take this on, um, then we should support that, and I will be supporting Supervisor Mua.
Supervisor Johnson, it's, uh, as you were speaking, I was writing down my question, and, uh, I showed Kayla I was writing down the same thing. The question was whether, uh, I wanted to know if Supervisor Mua felt that she could take more on at this time. That was my question for Supervisor Mua. Uh, do you have an answer to that, Supervisor Mua? Do you feel you can take on more? Is this something that you, uh, you are, um, passionate about, or, um, indifferent, either way?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, housing is an important issue to me, affordable housing is, is an important issue to me. Um, and, y- you know, I try to make as many meetings as I can. I, uh, and the meetings I miss, I try to catch up as much as I can. I'm actually very actively involved in, um, our meetings and, uh, the decisions that are being made at the Housing Authority, and I'd like to stay on, but then, if this board feels like there is someone else who can represent the board better, I would be open to that too. I will not be a roadstop to, uh, someone else who may be, uh, better at representing the board.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or concerns or questions? Supervisor Matt Jakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as I, as I listen here and stuff, I, I feel that I'm being attacked. Um, I, I pointed out a fact. Um, I research every executive appointment. I've done that since we've started with these executive appointments. Um, I've looked at attendance records before. Um, the county clerks can attest that I've pulled the attendance records multiple times. Um, Mr. Maresi, you, you asked that everybody be treated the same. Um, I looked at your attendance record when you ran for Executive Ops. Um, it, it's not the first time I've done this. I'm not pointing out any single board member. I do this for all appointments. I'm just pointing out a fact. I told people how I was gonna vote, and I, I felt kinda threatened about that, well, we should treat, make sure we treat everybody this way. I do treat everybody this way. I don't treat any board member any different than everyone else. I think we all should be hi- held to a high standard. I myself have a family. I have two boys that are in ninja class, that are in T-ball, that are in football. I have a daughter that's playing a volleyball game this evening that I can't attend because I'm here. I know what a busy life is. I teach, I run my own business, okay? I understand it, but I ran for county board to represent my constituents, and if I'm on a committee meeting, on a committee, I'm gonna make, do what I can to make that committee so my constituents have a voice, and I feel everybody should be held to that standard.
Thank you. Uh, Supervisor Bob Gifford?
Yes, hey, uh, thanks for the, um, acknowledgement. I, um, if, if Supervisor Mua would wanna step down, I would be willing to step up for that, uh, committee, because I believe that, uh, I share her enthusiasm for, um, low-income housing and for housing issues in general, and the commitment to, uh, achieving zero homelessness in our communities. So, if she does wish to step aside, I'd be willing to, uh, take that on.
Thank you, Supervisor Gifford. Supervisor Matt Jakowski?
I, I do have one more thing. For these appointments to committees that aren't county committees, I, I realize the Housing Board is separate to the county, um, and I'm gonna go back to Land and Water Committee. We will appoint a person on Land and Water, let's say Central Wisconsin Windshed Partners. We appoint a person, and we appoint an alternate. So, the county always has a represent, representative at that committee. Maybe that's something we could look at, at the future with these non-commissions that aren't county, statutory county committees, that are outside quasi-Portage County committees. Maybe we could work at, at appointing a, a, um, alternate for that. And, and that's why these appointments are, are kinda important, because they're, they're representing the county at a meeting that there's other stakeholders in the game. Um, the central transportation would be another one of those, those type committees that kinda, they're part of county government, but they kinda sit outside. So, what I'm gonna do, I, I'm gonna change my mind, I'm gonna vote for Supervisor Mua to be involved in this, but maybe through county executive, Executive Ops, maybe this would be a thing for them, to look at some of these outside county committees, that maybe we have a, an appointment and alternate. That way, if somebody can't make it to one of these meetings, the county still has a voice, or maybe a majority voice at the table what they're supposed to have there, so we always make sure we have that situation.
Supervisor Mua?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor, uh, Matt Jakowski. I just wanna also point out that on the Portage County Housing Authority Committee, I'm not the only Portage County Supervisor on that committee. Uh, Supervisor Chris Dubeck is also on the, um, Housing Authority Committee, and it's always been, uh, two Portage County Supervisors on that committee since I've been on it.
Supervisor Mua, did you have any comment to what Supervisor Bob Gifford had said?
I am so committed to, uh, being at as many of meetings. The last few months should not, uh, have to, um, you know, I will try to commit as much as I can. When I cannot, I would definitely let the, uh, Executive Ops Committee know.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments? We've got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, clerk will take, uh, I will just do a, uh, call, call for the question. If I get too much, then I'll, we'll do a roll call, but all those in favor with the appointment, say aye.
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 Opposed? Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution ordinance requesting the State Senate to convene an extraordinary session for water quality funding.
Resolution number thirty-five, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, this resolution calls on the State Senate to convene to address, to address thirteen pending water bills.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Bob Gifford. Questions, discussion? All those in favor? Supervisor Barry Jakowski?
Just a comment, you may notice that this came through Ag and Extension. It was brought to our attention, uh, during the evening of, uh, Land and Water. Land and Water, of course, had, was meeting shortly before county board at the time. Uh, I think Supervisor Matt Jakowski requested an addendum to the, to the, excuse me, uh, our agenda at the time. Supervisor Haga didn't, or Chair Haga didn't feel that it was appropriate at the time, so we quickly, uh, changed gears and put it through Ag and Extension so we could have it on this month's meeting. So, if you're wondering why this resolution comes through Ag and Extension, uh, it was a time factor.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in, uh, Supervisor Matt Jakowski?
Go ahead. Um, this is, this is just in, in, I apologize, cuz when the resolution was doing this, I'm gonna ask for an amendment, um, on this resolution. Um, when we did it, it was, it was kinda in a hurry. I do realize we have, we're sending it to the Wisconsin Counties Association. Um, since this has such an effect on local governments, I would ask it to be sent to the Towns, Wisconsin Towns Association also. Um, so the last, be it further resolved, um, in, insert Wisconsin Towns Association.
Is that it?
That's, that's an amendment I'm making.
That's an amendment.
Seconded.
Seconded by Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor with the amendment? Up.
Aye.
In favor with the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed? Amendment carries. Back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Authorizing an agree, uh, number two, authorizing agreement with Motorola Solutions, Inc. to provide updates to the Astro twenty-five system for the year twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-seven.
Resolution number thirty-six, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, submitted by the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee. This resolution authorizes an agreement between Portage County Sheriff's Office and Motorola Solutions Incorporated for updates and maintenance related to their communication system.
Motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Don Jankowski. Any corrections or changes? Discussion? All those, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, authorize an agreement with AT&amp;T Motorola Systems and Eventide and Nelson Systems to provide updated Next Gen nine-one-one call handling equipment and logging recording system along with the updates to the new system for the year twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-five. I wanna thank you guys for these long ones like that. Motion by Supervisor Don Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Strike. Any questions or discussions?
Strike.
I believe that'd be strike.
Strike.
Strike. No, strike. Strike. Strike is gone, strike is here.
Any other discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppo- opposed? Motion carries. Number four, uh, reorganization of Portage County Health and Human Services, uh, community health nurse position.
Resolution number thirty-eight, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, submitted Resolution number thirty-eight, twenty, 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 twenty-two, submitted by the Health and Human Services Board and Human Resource Committee. This resolution authorizes a reallocation of hours for two community health nurse positions for the Health and Human Services Department.
Motion by Supervisor Mora, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Any questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Reappointment of County Weed Commissioner.
Resolution number thirty-nine, twenty, 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 twenty-two, submitted by the Land and Water Conservation Committee. This resolution approves the reappointment of John Iran as the County Weed Commissioner.
Motion by Supervisor Splinter, seconded by Supervisor Barry Chakowski. Any questions? Supervisor Barry Chakowski.
Not a question, Mr. Chair, and thank you. Just a little recognition for John, Aaron. I would hope that you would all join us in, uh, reappointing John as Weed Commissioner. He is a godsend to this county, many a times doing his work, using his own assets to, uh, complete a job that helps the county in its entirety, so I would, I would ask you to, please, join me in voting for this resolution.
Supervisor Splinter.
Uh, I just wondered, uh, I don't have any opposition to it, but the, the title, a County Weed Commissioner, I'm wondering just, uh, whether it's valid or not, uh, should it be stated County Invasive Weed Commissioner? Because weed can be.
Could be many things.
It could be many things, but invasive weed kinda is what his job is to make sure we don't have outbreak of invasive weed, I would think. That's, I'm not a farmer, so I don't know, but that just seems more appropriate for a title.
Quite well taken. Supervisor Matt Chakowski.
Um, I believe it's, in, by statute, it has to be Weed Commissioner, um, by state statute, correct, Council Ray?
That's my recollection, yeah.
And if you get an invasive weed commissioner, we may call it invasive weed in the county, and there's different levels of invasive weeds. Um, some of the DNR don't, some weeds that we here in the county may consider invasive or and/or noxious may not be considered by the state or the Department of Natural Resources, so we, we may run into a little trouble with that, but I believe state statute references it as a county weed commissioner, and that's why it's, it's been that way. And those are spelled out in that statute, what his term is and what he does.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. Supervisor Barry Chakowski.
I was just gonna explain the same thing that my brother just did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Who's?
ASTRO.
Supervisor ASTRO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to, uh, piggyback on word of Supervisor Chakowski's, uh, thanks to, uh, to our Weed Commissioner and all of the work that that he does, uh, and at his own cost, um, we're, we're getting, we're, we're taking advantage of him. We really need to look at finding some kinda monies to throw at him because he's using his own equipment, uh, and his own time and, 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 thank heaven as he is, but, uh, we should really compensate him somehow. In the future, we should look at that.
Thank you Supervisors ASTRO. I, uh, attended one of the meetings, and, uh, I feel that we are very lucky to have him in Portage County, and, uh, I don't know if the rest of the body knows, but he does not get a salary. It's all charity. Uh, he comes to these meetings, he goes around and looks at, at things, uh, uses his own gas, his own equipment, and if we're going to continue, uh, I think it's something that, uh, either Executive Holman and myself need to see if there's a little room in there for, for something, but, uh, some kinda recognition. I think when we started this, we were all a little unsure of what it was going to be, but if anybody were to attend that meeting or talk to anybody, we've get, uh, folks from Wood County attended one of the meetings because they wanted to come down here and gather. He covers Wood County, too, isn't it? Tri-county is Supervisor Barry Chakowski?
Yes, and he does, he is the Weed Commissioner over in Wood County, doesn't have quite as much support over there. Of course, John is a, a resident of Portage County, but we also had, uh, people from Washeer County, uh, here interested in what was John was doing. Washeer County has kinda left it to their Highway Department, and I think they were looking as to what structure we were using as well. Um, again, and I, I can't reiterate enough that we sure get a lot of bang for our buck, which we're giving no buck to him, so we're just getting a lot of bang.
I, I think our, our Highway Commissioner, uh, and, uh, Mr. Check, uh, has, uh, enough going on, and I know that he works with those folks that do the mowing and, uh, to make them aware and to also, uh, include mapping of these things later on in, in working with the Highway Committee. So like I said, uh, he is very involved, and I wanna make sure everybody is aware of that. Supervisor Barry Chakowski.
Yes, and as you mentioned that, uh, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the recognition. John has actually gone down and done training classes for the Highway Department here in Portage County, again, free of charge.
Yep, so I, I hope if we find something that we can get the Board supportive of it, uh, no matter how small it is, so appreciate it. There's no further discussion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number six, resolution approving and authorizing the Aging Disability Resource Center to enter into a service contract with the City of Stevens Point Central Transit Office for the provision of riders for rides for seniors and adults and disability, with disabilities.
Resolution number forty, twenty, 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 twenty-two, submitted by the Commissioner on Aging and ADRC Board. This resolution approves and authorizes a contract between the ADRC and Stevens Point to provide rides for senior citizens and adults with the disabilities.
Motion, motion by Supervisor Anday, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, resolution awarding the sale of two million, two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand general obligation promissory notes, series twenty-twenty-A. Take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Lattick. Uh, we have Christine, Christina, Kristen from PFM, uh, you'd like to speak?
Sure. Um, you can see, one, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. So I have a short presentation, um, that's on the screen. If you flip to the next page, I don't know if I had that. Do that. So today in our office, we took bids at ten AM on your two million, two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand geo-promissory notes, and we received four bids, and we were very pleased with the results. The best bid with the lowest cost to the county is Bankers Bank out of Madison with a true interest cost rate of point five-five-two-four-zero-zero. You can see you had some, you know, yes. Um, and you can see the cover bid was, that's actually Bank of Oklahoma at a point seven-oh-six-nine. You see it bids from Baird as well as Northland Securities out of Minneapolis. So you had interest, so I actually called Bankers Bank and I said, okay, thank you for your bid, this is awesome, you know, kind of what's the story? And he said that they knew that you have a very supportive local community, bank community, and he knew that by purchasing them that there would be a lot of interest. So it was really exciting to see this, um, bid. As you know, we went unrated, um, we're in unprecedented times in the market. There are, this is gonna be a record month for bond sales across the country because everybody wants to get things in before the election because of the uncertainty in the market. So, um, I would just say excellent planning on your part. This is a great rate, um, and you have, you know, the goal is to have local support. Um, the next slide just shows the existing debt that you had prior to bringing these to market. Um, you did pay off some notes in June this year, so you just have the two thousand eighteen and nineteen notes outstanding that are supported by a local levy. And then the third play, third page of the handout basically shows the, um, debt once you add in the two thousand twenty financing. You can see that you're just kind of keeping your debt levy, um, pretty level, um, with kind of a step down in the future if you have future borrowing needs, so, um, so don't compare two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one because it doesn't have the June payments.
Okay.
Your levy's not jumping that much. So, yeah, great news. We were really pleased with the results, especially since, you know, the rating agencies are so backed up that they could not have gotten in a rating call until after this meeting, so, you know, this is exciting.
Yeah, two, two million, uh-huh, two hundred mil, two million and two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand at a half a percent interest rate, uh, very, very good, so, yeah, I'm happy. Anybody else have any comments? Supervisor Chakowski?
Just wanna thank Jenny Josie and her department for, for getting this done.
Yes, thank you Jennifer. Anybody else have any, any comments? Supervisors ASTRO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious, uh, did you guys receive a handout of this that you're thinking of in the, in the room there?
I, when I get, I take it that you were looking for one, a handout as well, but being there was a slide, slideshow.
Correct. I mean, I, it was not seen on the screen, but, yeah, if we could get a hard copy for the people that were at home, I'd appreciate it. I'm sure they would.
Jerry, um, just so you know, we received that this afternoon, so I did send that out to everyone in an email. Um, if there are ever handouts that we get for the meeting, we send those out, or I send those out via email so you at home can see them as well.
Email is fine. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and this one is one of those that's time-sensitive because, uh, Jennifer, when did, when did this all take place?
Today. So the call was scheduled at ten AM this morning. Bond Council redid the numbers and sent that, uh, mid-afternoon, two-thirty-ish. So when bond sales happen, they're always the same day, um, because the sale, we typically hold them in the morning, we have the results and everything pulled together by afternoon so you can adopt the sale that evening, so it is very time-sensitive.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Supervisors ASTRO.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Kayla, I'm sorry, I did not read the email. I appreciate you doing that, and, uh, there certainly was, uh, I wasn't barking at anything, I just was curious if there was a handout, if we could get one, but if it's an email form, that's fine. Thank you.
Yep, no, we, we, we try and do better and better every day, and Kayla and Lee stay on top of those things, so, uh, to make sure they get them out to you so you have all the information. Uh, so, any other, uh, any other questions? Somebody else?
Jenny Josie had her handout.
Jenny, you had a comment? No? Or you're just waving thank you?
No, it was just the comment on the time-sensitive nature of a bond sale today.
Okay. Anybody else? We have a motion and a second. Uh, if there's no further discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Yes.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eight, establishing a fund balance clar, uh, clarification, uh, as required by Gasby, statement number fifty-four, fund balance reporting and governmental fund type definitions.
Resolution number forty-two, twenty, 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 twenty-two, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution establishes fund balance classifications.
Motion by Supervisor Mora, seconded by Supervisor Chakowski. Any other discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number nine, authorizing a twenty-twenty budget adjustment for the Solid Waste Department due to increased swap volume.
Resolution number forty-three, twenty, 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 twenty-two, submitted by the Solid Waste Management Board and Finance Committee. This resolution approves a budget adjustment in the amount of three hundred and fifteen-thousand for the Solid Waste Department due to increased swap volume. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Madine, seconded by Supervisors ASTRO. Uh, any discussion? Supervisor Neville.
I missed this when it came through our committee, but the sixth whereas, the third to the last word should be vice, B-I-C-E. Vice versa.
Vice versa?
Yep. Sixth, the sixth whereas, third to the last word.
Are you making that in the form?
Yes, I'm.
Make that in the form of an amendment?
Yes, please, make that correction.
Motion, uh, by Supervisor Neville to make an amendment, seconded by Supervisor Barry Chakowski. Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor with the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Back to the original motion as amended. Any other discussion? Supervisor Matt Chakowski.
I have one question, um, just, we are, in here it says that we have to provide a minimum of twenty-five thousand, two-hundred tons to Marathon County. Um, maybe Supervisor Moresi or Supervisor Johnson could answer this. I know he's, uh.
Chair.
The chair and Supervisor Johnson works for Marathon County Solid Waste. Is there a maximum number of tons that we can haul to Marathon County?
I'd be happy to answer that.
Supervisor Moresi, or, I'm sorry, Supervisor Johnson.
Yeah, um, so I administer that contract. It's a thirty-year contract, it was signed in two thousand two. It is between, um, Marathon County, Shawano County, and Portage County. It's regional disposal agreement.
Here.
Um, the contract was set up to have a plus or minus five percent on a put or pay, so the put or pay is twenty-eight thousand plus or minus the five percent. There is, would not be a top end, so if, let's say, Portage County all of a sudden became garbage capital of the world, and they wanted to send to Marathon County Solid Waste Department a hundred thousand ton, we would figure out how to manage, my staff and I would manage that hundred thousand ton as part of our agreement with Marathon County, or with Portage County. That agreement is in effect until twenty thirty-two, um, and just for everyone's edification, Marathon County is currently in the process of securing, um, landfill airspace until twenty forty-five. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. Any other discussion? Uh, we have a motion and a second on the amended, uh, resolution. Any, uh, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
I will be abstaining.
Supervisor Johnson, thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion carries. Number ten, authorizing a twenty-twenty budget adjustment for the Solid Waste Department due to increased transfer facility, uh, facilities volume.
Resolution number forty-four, twenty, 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 twenty-two, submitted by the Solid Waste Management Board and Finance Committee. This resolution approves a budget adjustment in the amount of seventy-five thousand. This requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Supervisors, uh, motion by Supervisors ASTRO, seconded by Supervisor Lattick. Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I will, I will be abstaining again. Please have the record note.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. Number eleven, authorizing a twenty-twenty budget adjustment for the Solid Waste Department related to the processing of recyclable materials.
Resolution number forty-five, twenty, 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 twenty-two, submitted by the Solid Waste Management Board and Finance Committee. This resolution approves a budget adjustment in the amount of thirteen thousand, one-fifty. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Moresi, seconded by Supervisor Zastro. Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Take a motion to adjourn. Alisa, were you, Supervisor Johnson, were you gonna abstain from this one as well?
Yes, thank you.
Supervisor Johnson?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, I was on mute. My, my apologies, yes.
Okay, thank you. Good, thank you for, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Supervisor Barry Chakowski, seconded by Supervisor Gussel. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.